Guided along a pathway to success. And we need to approve our agenda for this evening, so I need a motion in a second.
So moved.
Chris, did you vote, Chris? It's the seat. Alright, we're all in agreement about what we're gonna talk about.
You know, Mark, we never used to do that. I'm still thinking about it.
This is second meeting, we've done that now, second or third. Alright, that brings us first agenda item, student achievement liaison report.
Quite a few things, which is awesome, tonight. First of all, Corrin High School, I'd like to congratulate Cory Thornacraft. He was named a National Merit semifinalist. Also, at Corrin High School, the band in the Lebanon competition won best auxiliary, best music, best general effect, and second place overall, just missing first place. So congratulations to the kids, the parents, the directors, I know they all put in a ton of time, starting at the beginning of the summer, really, so just congratulations to them. Northwest High School, I would like to congratulate the homecoming king and queen Barbara Assendon and Diego Yun, and also congratulations to Coach Johnson and their football team for winning an exciting game against Ross on Friday night, they had a big crowd there. And at Corrin Middle School, Kathy Grimm, our art teacher, on winning the Apple Award for her support of architectural education in the community. And Eileen Brawning at Monfort Heights was named Outstanding Educator at Monfort Heights, but then went on to win Hamilton County Council PTA's Outstanding Educator, so that's awesome. And then at Corrin Elementary, SOAR, our PBIS platform, CE recognized our Students of the Month. Kindergarten, we have Delilah Place, Skylar Harris, Riley Watkins, Braxton Cohen, Louis Dorman, and Reagan Capel. Each student was given a certificate, pencil, and a treat, and students who were nominated but not selected in the above group earned a certificate and a pencil. And of those six students, one student was randomly drawn and won a gift card, and that was Braxton Cohen in 3rd grade. So each month, Corrin Elementary will be doing that, and each school has a different way of recognizing their PBIS students. Pleasant Run Middle School, our Students of the Week are Ben Broton, Gavin Cripps, Isaac Lopez de la Cruz, Malaya Hightower, Deja Malone, Leila Simmons, Rise and Deal, Brianna Black, Brielle Brewer, and Hunter Ree. So congratulations to them as well. And then I also just wanted to recognize all the PTAs at the high schools organizing all the homecoming parades and the homecoming, the book fairs, staff meals for conferences, and then all the fundraisers. I know a couple of our elementary schools go in the Mumkins, and that's a huge one, so just thank you to all the parents that are working hard on those as well. And that is all.
Nadia, how did you like your first homecoming?
I didn't see you here yet.
You were the grand marshal. Anything else?
That's all for that, and then we do have an update with Taylor Elementary that's gonna be presenting, so we can get right onto that. The district has relentless focus on literacy across all grade levels and content areas. Our elementary teachers across the district have been participating in graduate-level study of the science of teaching reading, the Level Letters Program, we did hear about that at our last meeting as well. The new learning has had a big impact on the reading instruction that's taking place in our classrooms, and the students and teachers at Taylor Elementary are here to share some of the new strategies that they're using and the impact of, on this research, proven instructional strategies is having on teaching and learning, from teacher and student perspective.
Hi, thank you guys for having us. I'm Casey Scherz, Principal at Taylor Elementary. I have Andrea, my assistant, and Karis Edwards here with us tonight. We wanted to just thank you for having an opportunity to come and talk about, we're about, I'd say midway through-ish for our letters learning that we have going on in our buildings, and we just wanted to have an opportunity, I know you're gonna see a video here of some things, but we wanted to give Karis an opportunity to talk about some of the great things that are going on, not only at Taylor, but with what is happening and with letters in our elementary schools. So as you had mentioned, Ms. Toby, letters is language essentials for teachers of reading and spelling. So we, like I said, we just started our second portion of the program right now. We got, you know, our new book, and we're really, really ready to go, and having opportunities to have very personal, now that we're able to start getting back in person, we had our first session, a lot of us with being able to get our hands on and do a lot of work together in the letters program. So I'll go ahead and turn it over here to Karis to talk with you a little bit more about it, but again, thank you for letting us come this evening and talk to you guys about it.
Yeah, so I'm just here to share the student, or the teacher perspective of the impact of letters and the impact it's having in the classroom. So this is my, only my second year of teaching, and so I started with letters from the very beginning, and after the first year, I decided to go ahead and get ORN certified, and so I'm in the process of doing that currently. So getting into letters has kind of opened this new perspective to me of something I'm more deeper interested in within education, and I think that letters provides the tools and kind of this new concept of what instruction in the classroom should look like. So in the video, you'll see a lot of it, but a lot of it is just more hands-on learning for the kids. We just started today in my classroom, and it's, I moved to all small groups to work with my kids, and I think that just the model that letters performs, letters provides for us helps us to better understand like what, where our kids are actually starting, but also where are they going, and I think that's the great thing is that, you know, I'm at the beginning of it, but also people who are gonna be at the end of it are gonna have a better understanding of where they're coming from, but we're also having an understanding of where they need to go, so.
Before we start, can somebody explain letters, like, we all talk about it, but people that are watching may not understand what that is, they're probably thinking, "A letter?"
So, so letters is a, as we said, the language essentials of teachers of reading and spelling, and so it's a program based around the science of reading, so probably in the past five years, I would say, we've moved away from whole language approach, which is usually just reading and hoping that you kind of get the information you're gonna learn while you're reading. Instead, the approach now is that there's a mechanism and a methodology to how students are learning and obtaining language knowledge, and how we decode and how we learn to understand language. And so basically, letters is a program that helps to break down those skills and the foundational skills, and how those skills piece together to actually ensure that students are understanding language, but also that they are utilizing all their knowledge and language concepts to work together.
Thank you.
And just to piggyback off that, because, Chris, you did a really good job of explaining that, but the National Reading Panel came out with five areas of teaching reading through, like, the science of teaching it, so you've got phonics and phonemic awareness and alphabetic principle, you've got fluency, comprehension, vocabulary, and spelling, and so this breaks each one of those areas down into ways to assess where a student is and strategies to use to move them forward, and as you mentioned, it's a continuum of growth for a student. So this really lays out for our teachers the path that a student takes and how they guide them along that path individually, so they are able to customize it for each child to move them in the path that they're on at the most accelerated rate possible. So it's really implementing the science with the art, which is what our teachers bring to it, is that artfulness of how you implement that with students, which you'll see in the video.
Becoming a skilled instructor, whether in an intervention or classroom setting, can take years of practice and study, and trial and error. Letters accelerates teacher knowledge, which directly benefits the students they teach. Teachers learn how to deliver effective instruction to meet all their students' needs. Here's how we've incorporated learning here at Taylor Elementary.
Last year was your first year of teaching, and it was the first year of letters. How has this training impacted you as a teacher?
So, last year, when I first started teaching, I realized that there were a lot of things, especially like phonics rules, that I didn't really know myself because I hadn't learned them in college, so I was then able to learn those rules and then feel more confident about teaching my students, and it reminded me of our letters training that we just had, we were talking about teaching our students syllables, especially open and closed syllables, and just all the different types, and it reminded me of a lesson that I taught my students last year, that I had to be taught about before I taught it, because I wasn't too familiar with it. But then, once I learned all about the phonics rule and I was able to teach my students, I saw how quickly they were picking up on it, and I was so surprised, because it seems like a hard concept, but even these first graders were doing so awesome, they had a lot of fun with it, too. They learned how to label the consonants and vowels, and they were dividing up syllables, and before they knew it, they were reading these huge words, and they felt so confident about themselves, and it was fun for me and them.
Hi, my name is Sherry Palmer, and this is my first year in 1st grade. For the last 32 years, I've taught kindergarten. One of the reasons I asked to switch grades is because of the letters program. When we started doing letters for our professional development, I quickly bought into this program. I fully believe that it's a program that gives teachers the knowledge, the background knowledge, and the tools to use any reading program to help their students be successful readers and writers. So I did start the letters in kindergarten, but with most things, when the kids started clicking, it was the end of the year, and it was depressing to me, because I wanted to continue. So I thought, well, if I go to 1st grade and they've already started, I will actually see all those light bulbs clicking on and see more and more of my students using those tools and actually reading and writing. So that's why I'm in 1st grade this year.
I feel like learning the things that we're learning in letters about what a child should be able to do is helping me to identify those students who aren't able to meet those skills as quickly as others and get them the help that they need sooner than later. For example, I have a student who can read already in kindergarten, we're only in week 5, but she doesn't know her letter sounds. I know exactly what to do in order to get her where she needs to be at the end of the school year, so that she has all of the pieces she needs to connect the dots and build that bridge of, when I see the words, I'm also able to produce the sounds that make those words going forward. So I like to say that I'm enjoying letters, and I'm thankful that the district has taken the time to put the money into teaching all of us.
First sound I write, so I say, you say, and then write it, okay? Here we go. On the desk, yeah. The first sound you're gonna write is, what's the sound? Do you know another way to write the "t" sound? You know three ways? Okay, we can talk about it. Right, the way that you know to write the sound, what was the sound? Good, write it. Okay, we haven't talked about this yet, but we call this thing called best bet spelling, say best bet. So best bet means that there's a different way to write each sound the best way. The best way to write the "t" sound, as you all did, is the letter "c", and then we put a comma, a little comma, it just looks like that, it's a little backwards seal, it's really tiny. And then what's the other way we know to write the "t" sound? Okay, and then we write "i". What sound do we need today? Ready, let's do our motion with it. Let's just make this sound by ourselves, can you say? Now, wait, and stop. Can everybody just open their mouth and make the shape of your mouth, but not say the sound? Ready, go. Let me just check it, let me check that, we don't have our fingers in our mouth. Now can you say the sound again? Say, "a". And stop. Great job, okay. Listen, I'm gonna do our roller coaster, and I wanna see if you can tell me where the "a" is. Are you ready? Get your roller coaster ready. We're gonna focus on the word "rat". Can you say "rat"? Like a big fat rat. Ready? We're gonna do it with me, say "rat". Okay, let's do our roller coaster. Let's do it again, really fast at the end. What was, where was the "a" sound? Tell me, 1, 2, 3, and... Okay, tell me about your learning last year in reading.
I learned three letter blends. I learned how to split the words up by splitting them in the middle, and I learned, well, I learned how to write long sentences, and I got better at writing, finger spelling.
Hi, Mason, can you tell me a little bit about what we've been doing in class? What sound did we learn today? "a". And did you learn, is the "a" sound a stop sound or a continuous sound? Very good, it just keeps going. Can you hold the "a" sound for me? Very good. So we've been working on kid lips in class each day, and every day, we've been learning some different sounds, haven't we? Do you like coming to school and learning how to read? Very good, thanks, Mason, for joining me today. Tyler, can you let me know what sound we learned earlier this week? Yes, what sound was that? Good job, "t". And is "t", is the "t" sound a stop sound or a continuous sound? Very good, and what else have you been learning about in class that you really like learning about? Good, like panda, very good. And is "p-p" a voice sound? Yes, very good. Anything else you like learning about here at Taylor Elementary?
Alright, Aria and Tatum, tell me a little bit about what you work on with Ms. Mudd.
Well, we worked on a lot of syllable division, because it helps us with our words and reading them, and it helps us learn bigger words and how to spell them.
Awesome. Tatum, did you enjoy doing syllable division? What does syllable division do? Why is it important?
It helps you break down words, spell them, read them, and...
Understand them? Absolutely.
We just wanna say before we leave, we appreciate you guys giving us time to talk about it. I think I speak for all of us when I say it's really changed the conversation at our schools, and even last year when we were learning letters for the first time, the conversations in, like, even our lunchroom, we're like, we didn't know this growing up, like, how, like, it just is, like, we're learning so much along the way, too, and I think that it's not only making our kids better learners, but it's helping us be better teachers, and, I mean, even, you saw, the kids are explaining it for themselves, and I think that's one of the great things about science of reading is that they actually understand why they're learning it, and they understand why it's important and what the purpose of it is, and I think that having that approach and having that knowledge is gonna make them even more motivated in their reading, so, yeah, thank you.
I have a question for you. This is your second year teaching? The things that you're learning in letters, how much of that was in your college training?
Not very much, to be honest, so I, so I went to Xavier, and my, I had my phonics instruction class my second year, and I felt that I didn't necessarily understand what phonics really was, there was a lot of vocabulary, but it wasn't necessarily a mapping together of how do all these connect together, and that progression with letters provides the visuals and the, hey, this is the five pieces of reading instruction, but it didn't provide that, you know, these are the sounds that we're gonna teach, this is how you should teach them. There's that overview, but no one really understood necessarily, this is how you're gonna teach it, like, here's how you create activities to do those things, but when you sit down to teach it, like, what should it look like, and what is that gonna feel like? And so I think that by having letters and actually having that knowledge and seeing it in practice and getting the activities that are actually going to build that knowledge for the kids is more helpful than any course I took, so.
I think years ago, when they started the literacy leadership team, the state of Ohio actually was one, we had a summary that we worked with a consultant, and letters was one of the premier programs that they recommended teachers, and at that time, really, only the Mount, and I don't know if it's different, but really, the Mount's the only university in this area that does deep dive in science of reading.
So you guys have been in education for a little bit, so, but you're new out of college, so you're still kind of in a learning phase, and you're probably pretty porous to trying something new. The folks that have been around a while, how, what has their response been to letters? Because it seems like, correct me if I'm wrong, it seems like a very scientific approach at learning the functionality of the brain and how comprehension occurs, correct?
Yeah, I think you heard from Sherry Palmer, who's very much a veteran teacher, and she has embraced it so much that she really did, she came to me and Andrea, and she was like, can I please go with my kids? I want to see how this is gonna transfer. So I think, you know, especially at the, you know, K3 level, we've seen a lot of buy-in, and we've seen a lot of teachers that have really, really wanted to run with it, and now that they're getting an understanding, because, again, especially veteran teachers, this was not anywhere, you know, and it's not my wheelhouse, I would say, for sure, but being a part of the professional development that's happening has allowed me to see how, if this is an avenue that you focused on when you were in school, and you didn't get that, the missing piece, when you start to have the opportunity to get it, just I could see how it can click. And we're seeing a lot of that buy-in, which is really good.
Well, a lot of it is the science, but we have a team of reading specialists that are also teaching with multi-sensory, sensory approaches, for us to be reading, maybe a teacher is showing up, you know, eight weeks in a row on Mondays and, you know...
Yeah, we, last year, we started...
To learn a lot of the routines and things like that that you saw, so there is a lot of buy-in.
Is this all grades throughout the elementaries using it, or is it more applied at the younger?
The, so, last year, we had one, we had all teachers up through 5th grade, this year, the new math adoption, they've kind of shifted focus, but K to 3, we thought a lot of that, you know?
And it is all teachers K3 who are doing the learning?
And all reading, all international specialists as well, so the assistants and the older graders, some of us, they all have a resource.
So that explains why when Casey introduces herself, it's like, "Casey".
Just to comment, how learning has so greatly changed over the years, it looks like a good thing. I liked how they did the thing with the "ay" and all the words and the phonics that went with that, so it sounds like a good thing. Appreciate you guys putting it all together for us.
Good job. That brings us to legislative update.
Mark, there wouldn't have been anything except for what happened Friday over at Princeton and four other schools in Ohio, the swatting, what a mess, the commerce, the millions of dollars that was lost with stores having to close, the traffic, that was backed up forever. But anyway, I did hear a gentleman today, he's a state senator, saying that the Ohio Senate is gonna fast-track Senate Bill 292, which greatly increases the penalties for swatting. For example, it used to be just a general first-degree misdemeanor if you swatted somebody, you know, called the police that there was something going on, and they show up and force. Now, it's gonna go from a first-degree misdemeanor to a third-degree felony, but if somebody's hurt in the process, it goes to a first-degree felony, which is some serious, serious jail time. The problem with this is, I did hear the voice of the person who did the Princeton phone call, it sounded like it was foreign to me, like, it was probably somebody from a different country, you know, how you get the phone calls from the people, and, you know, you're gonna inherit $2 million if you send $500, and it was that kind of voice.
It was the same voice up in Springfield.
Same guy?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't hear his. But, so, it sounded like it was orchestrated, but what a mess they created, and I'm glad to see they're gonna fast-track it again, it's House, or Senate Bill 292, I think the guy's name was Senator Johnson, but I'm not sure about that, and so they are gonna try to put a fire underneath this, so it gets done, and, but if the guy's in a foreign country, how do you enforce it and bring him to justice, or?
Well, I think they hit, like, eight other states in the last month doing this also.
Oh, okay. Serious problem, the good and bad of technology, that's for sure. So, that's it, Mark.
Yeah, just a couple things. October 27th is going to be the ribbon cutting for the new Natural Science Center. It's right, it's a building, it's right up in front of Monroe High School, so the new school will be open, I think, the week before that, but the ribbon cutting's the 27th, if anybody wants to come up to see that, and then...
You know what time?
No, they haven't decided a time yet, so I'll let everybody know when that'll be. And then finally, our students in the automotive class built a race car, and we finally, after the rain canceled us out twice, got to race down at Lawrenceburg Speedway, and took fourth place in the qualifying race, and they got to go on to the feature race. And what it was, was a fundraiser for the Butler Tech Foundation Tools for Schools, for kids that have to buy tools for their different classes and stuff, they don't have the money, they have this money, this fundraising money, that'll go and pay for the tools for the kids in the classes, so... So, um, but they finally, uh, um, got to do that. And there was a little, uh, because it's on the dirt track. And so there was a few repairs that had to be done. Scraping the bumpers, but it, it was a success and turned out really good.
That's great.
Yeah. So other than that, that's it.
Any questions for Jim? Okay. Any reports from any employee organization?
We have two tonight. First, we have Lexi Schmidt, who is a teacher at Corinne Middle School and is here to talk about their PBIS program, which Nicole mentioned earlier in her salt report. And she's going to talk about their integration of their student council into their PBIS program and their store that they're running.
Well, thank you so much for having me. So like you said, I'm Lexi Schmidt and I also have the Cady McCoy, who's our intervention coach at Corinne. Um, and I just am so passionate about this store and what it's doing for Corinne. So like Mr. Rader said, it is centered around our PBIS program. And so what that looks like at Corinne, we have our students being good cards. So what they should be striving for each day is to be caring, accountable, respectful, dynamic, and safe. And those are the categories that they can earn points for throughout the day. They can earn points from any staff member in the building. So that's one amazing feature that I love because it's not just, oh, I'm going to language arts class or math class. It could be, I picked up something in the cafeteria and Mr. Body saw me do it and I could get a point for being caring that way. So that's how they earn points throughout the day. And then the fun part comes in with the store. So every Monday, the students log on to our PBIS system and they're actually shopping online themselves. So they have, we have a lot of inventory and this is what I get really excited about because it's the kids. It's the kids' ideas coming to life. So we have, I'm sporting one of our PBIS shirts today. So this is one thing that they can get. Um, we also have our goodies, like our kids who love a sweet treat can get, you know, your classic Jolly Ranchers or bag of chips. We also have events. So we have our first Cardinal Cafe event coming up in October. There is a limited sixty tickets being sold. Um, students can earn a ticket to go have a donut and juice in the cafe from eight to eight-thirty, relax with their friends, just to time, you know, celebrate, hey, I'm, I got this, I'm doing a good job in school and I get a reward for it. Um, so we have our events. And then we also have privileges. And one of my favorite privilege is our Kona Ice Fast Pass. So I took this, our kids love Kings Island. And so we got this from our reading specialist, Ms. Benedict, who was like, fast pass. Kona Ice Days, I'm sure you guys know, are crazy for everybody involved. The students are waiting in line, so we sell fifteen fast passes per grade level. So they get announced over the announcements first and they get to bypass the line and go right to the Kona Ice truck. Um, and then they get more time to spend with their friends. But another easy free thing for us, but the kids absolutely love it. So every Monday they're purchasing. Now on Wednesdays, this is where student council comes in. My student council kids, they go meet Mrs. McCoy in our store. Now, when I say store, if you've been to Corinne Middle, I mean a closet in the hallway, but a store nonetheless, we've made it work. And it does have the half door on it. So our kids go to Mrs. McCoy and they're begging up the inventory for the entire school. I mean, this is really special to Corinne. It allows us to have a bigger inventory because it's not just one or two adults trying to beg up everything for the entire school. We also keep that half door open while they're doing this. So you have other students walking to lunch. They're going to the bathroom and they're popping their heads and like, oh, this is the store. Oh, when's my work coming in? So they see it and they're getting excited about it. And then on Friday, they report back to Mrs. McCoy and they go deliver the bags to the homeroom teachers on Friday mornings. And then the homeroom teachers pass them out at an appropriate time so we're not disrupting any instruction. But it has just been so much fun. The kids love it. The kids are so involved. They, I talked to my kids today. I'm like, how are you liking it? What's going on? How do you think the points are? And they're like, some things are a little high. And I was like, okay, we can work on that. But they're taking accountability. They're positive. It's not like, oh, I didn't get enough points. It's, oh, my friend next to me is getting the delivery. I gotta get more points for next week so I can get a delivery. So truly they have embodied it. The staff has been absolutely incredible too. They're excited about it. It has just been a breath of fresh air. It's a building celebrating our students' positive behavior. So that's the part of our store. Any questions?
That started this year?
Yes, this is our first year.
Yeah, that, that's, that's great for some of the challenges that we had last year.
Yeah. We were nervous because it was taking on a big task, but having the student council students involved and the students doing the work is making the world of difference. Like when I was in there monitoring it, they're like, Miss Schmidt, you're in the way. Can you, I was like, I'm so sorry. Yes, you guys do what you need to do. I'm just here to monitor. So they've totally taken it on themselves. And I actually had over a hundred and fifty students come to my student council meeting, um, who were interested. And a lot of them were asking about the store, like how do we get involved with the PBIS store? So the students are really excited about it.
Is that being duplicated elsewhere else?
Each, um, building has their own take on PBIS, but when I ran into Lexi and she was so exuberantly excited about the store and I love...
Really?
I'm gonna never guess.
Yeah, exactly.
And I love the way it was connected. I love the way it was connected to student council and she just kept talking about the ownership the kids were taking in this process. And so I asked her if she'd be willing to share that with all of you because it was amazing to hear from her.
Well, the peer-to-peer has, has much or more influence than listening to a teacher.
Yeah.
I mean...
We're not the cool ones.
Exactly, yeah.
It's making being good in school cool, yes. Like they are excited to get points. They're excited to shop, so.
Have you got any feedback from any parents? I always liked it because this stuff, it's not, besides Nicole.
Right, um...
Like this doesn't just stop when they get on the bus or walk up, you know, that, hopefully that behavior bleeds over.
Yeah, I've actually had a couple of sixth grade parents each, or reach out to me and they just ask me questions about what it is. And they're like, oh yeah, my son came home and I've never had my son so concerned about where I put his NBA pencil. And we have some students who leave it in the bathroom and Mr. Meadows was like, I saw two boys run back and say, I forgot my PBIS pencil. And, you know, just little things like that that you've never seen. So, yeah.
That's awesome.
It's just invaluable when, when you say the students and the student council are taking ownership and being a part of the implementation and the experience that they're going to take away from this as well.
And we're hoping they'll continue. So like my sixth grader, we're setting in a place that they'll continue each year. So they really can take that ownership and train the next group of workers to come in.
We've also had quite a bit of support from our PTA as well. They've, they've also been awesome.
Well, you already know what an impact you've had on my family, but thank you. And I mean, you just go above and beyond in everything you do. So you're such a special staff member here.
Thank you.
So, and thank you for doing this because I think this is, I mean, I, I see the pencils, the flaming hot cheetos. There's the list on my phone of everything that he's purchased. So, um, just know that, you know, you're making a, a difference and teaching them to save in, in a way too. Because, you know, if there's something they really want to save for it. So thank you guys.
Mr. Moore later this year.
Yeah, I was going to ask. How, how many points does Mr. Moore have?
Oh, yeah. Well, thank you guys so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you for coming.
Thanks, Katie. Thanks, Lexi.
Thank you.
And then we do have, um, Mr. Anthony Gaines here, who is a teacher at Northwest High School. And he was going to share some of his experiences tonight with the board about his implementation of academic teaming. He is one of our pioneers this year who has, um, taken it full force out of the gate and continue to move forward. So I'm going to let you share your experience.
All right. I'm Anthony Gaines, as you said. I'm teaching English at Northwest High School. And with the academic team, I implemented it into the, um, tenth grade classrooms. And I've always been a teacher, always constantly trying to pull students, um, to participate and to hear their voices and try to emphasize to them that their voice is important. Uh, and they, and we all have something to say. We just got to figure out how to say it. And with academic teaming, um, it made that process, um, so much easier to do. It's not so much of a pulling students to participate now. Um, the way it works is, um, whenever we have a, um, discussions and they do it in small groups or we can do it in whole groups. Um, but in small groups, they have what is called agree, agree, disagree cards. Um, and then also on the cards, it has a question or it has, I want to add, have more to add. Um, so if a question is posed, students will hold up if they agree or disagree. And then from there, I will ask, okay, can you share with us why you agree? And there are prompts on the back of the card. So it allows students who are, who struggle with coming up with how to start, it gives them a prompt. Um, for example, if they agree, they say, um, I agree with such and such because. So there's always a because. It's never a just, I agree. They have to extend, um, their thinking. Um, so, um, it, it really works with pulling them into the discussion. Now we've been in for a few weeks and when we're at whole group, um, discussions now, um, we don't necessarily use the agree, disagree cards, but the stems are used in class discussions. So it's, it's moving, you know, it's becoming a part of their conversations when we're having, um, class discussions. And it's, and not only that, but students have roles that they play in academic teaming. Um, facilitator, learning monitor, and member. And they have, um, they've taken ownership of, of the roles that they are playing, especially the learning monitors. Those responsibility is to make sure that everybody is, is doing their part. And, uh, if there's someone in a group that has not spoken up, I've, I've heard learning monitors asking, but we haven't heard from you. You know, so, um, academic teaming has really, um, and as for a teacher, it allows to facilitate and actually see and experience the productive struggle the students are going through, that they're talking through, or they're trying to figure it out, um, together instead of just raising their hands asking for the answer. So it's working well. I'm glad that this is another tool, um, in, in, in our toolbox as teachers. So thank you guys. I appreciate you asking me to come here today. Um, so.
You see more participation across your classes than them just sitting there and listening to you?
Well, in my class, they don't have an option.
That's good. Do you come up with the cards or, um, you said there are prompts on the back. Is that something you came up with?
No, it was all part of the toolkit that was given to us through academic teaming.
Might be something to try home.
Yeah, it's, what's nice about it is it's a framework so that it works in any content area. But that, you know, Mr. Gaines can adapt it to English. And we had Ms. Abel, who was here last time, we talked about how she adapted it to science. So it's the same framework, but able to be applied in any content area to make sure that students have those structures to participate equitably and to make sure that, you know, they have the conversation that they need to have to really dig into the content, whatever that content is.
And there's one other piece I, I wanted to mention. Um, one way that we do it in class is they have these boards in front of them, um, four squares and each of them has a square. Um, so when a question is posed, first I have them think about the question. That's part of the process that they've taught us. Have them think first and then write. So they will think about whatever question was posed. Then they would write their answer on their block in front of them. And then they would go into a group discussion and come up with a group response to the answer. And that's written in the middle of, of the, um, placemat. So it allows, it gives everybody that opportunity to participate and their response is given bound from the group.
That's awesome. We've heard a lot of really good stuff about this past two meetings.
Yeah, it's a really good structure that allows for the kind of engagement that, um, I think everybody's been longing for.
But there's, there's always one or two or even even more kids that would go the entire year without saying anything if given the opportunity. Yes, this kind of...
Draws them.
Gets them all involved.
Yeah, gets them all involved. And, and, you know, once they do it once or twice, the fear of it is hopefully subsided.
And they can't hide because with teachers being able to facilitate and monitor, walk around, you can listen to and see who is and who isn't participating.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do some more encouraging to get them to participate. Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job, sir. Got any other good stuff, Daryl?
Not right now. We'll, we'll get some more later.
All right. Uh, there were no submissions for community communications. And that brings us to consent items.
So tonight for the consent items, we will start with human resources.
So for consideration this evening, we have four retirements, ten resignations, six initial appointments, two change in status, and then various supplements.
For donations tonight, we have Snyder Electric, donation of paper, Staples donation of school supplies, Grace Wurzinski, donation of a musical instrument, and the Clipper YMCA donated a gift card. We also have several vendor contracts. The majority of those contracts are all for non-public. Um, we also have the special education services contract and a tutor and services contract as well.
And then we also have a handbook that is on there for approval, which is just updating the contact information to Sally Demler, our new director of special education. With that, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the adoption of the consent items as listed.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Susan, how did the walk-in go? Or is that somewhere, you have that meeting here somewhere?
No, Susan, you can give an update now.
So we had ten people this last week and I'm happy to say that we have five bus drivers in progress. Some of them have to have training. Chris is a researcher and that is critically important. So some of them are, some of them are going through training. So there's going to be a time lapse between when they absolutely are on the bus. But here, we're all getting together. We have our last hiring event Wednesday, this Wednesday, um...
Do you think there's, is there talk about possibly continuing to do those if, if they're successful or?
We're going to do a meeting with our HR team tomorrow and then talk to some principals and get, get something to ask.
Okay, great.
Have we ever thought or talked about a referral bonus for, we all kind of hang in our own little niches, right?
We've talked about referral programs, um, and that was something that Susan and I have talked about. Um, possibly developing a bonus would be something we'd have to kind of work through other processes with, but at least a program that we can start to allow our staff to refer other members of the community that they think will be good employees because our employees are our best asset and resource.
Absolutely. And they know them better than they might or will.
Susan, how's the call-off spin with bus drivers? I know there were like mine one day. How, is that stable, Iden?
So Chris probably has more information about that than I do.
Yeah, it's still running pretty high, but, uh, we do have some folks that'll be coming back this next week. And, uh, hopefully we see a turn for better.
I see all these other companies. I saw one day a, um, a billboard from first student or whatever, um, offering now twenty-three dollars an hour to start. So it keeps going up, starting like great, so.
Do we know the percentage of students that are out on a day related to a bus? Just because I know those bus numbers have gone up and up. Even today, there was two more added. Do we know how many students are missing school related to that?
No, we don't have data on that. We do track that so we can pull that. But I don't have it right now.
I'm just curious if, if that's something you monitor and there's a way, maybe we could try to get around that to get those kids that, that are in dire need of transportation, so.
We can, we track that. There is a special code they use because it is based on transportation.
Okay, thanks.
And that book cash is five to zero. And that brings us to fiscal consent items.
Yes, good evening. First, we have the minutes from the September twelfth regular meeting to dispense with reading of and approve. And then we have our financial reports for the month of August. Our all-funds balance was eighty-six point four million with our general fund unreserved balance at forty-five million. Our revenues were tracking at thirty-three point nine million for the year or at thirty-five percent. And that is because we received our second half taxes. Um, so we are funding in February and August each year. And then our expenditures are at fourteen point six million or at fifteen percent, um, for two months into, to the year. Our investment weighted average return is one point nine percent. And as, um, investments are maturing, we're able to take advantage of the increased investment rates. And our list of monthly bills, our routine monthly bills, as well as we have S R H B A C and coaching contracts. We purchased some textbooks, paid severance. There's the technology one-to-one devices. We have staff and student software and annual licenses that, um, we pay for each year. We had facility exterior wall repairs on a couple of our buildings, paid for professional development, and then our auxiliary and grant fund payments that we have. So with that, I ask the board to approve the fiscal consent items as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or questions for Amy? Any discussion or questions for Amy? Passes five to zero. Thank you.
So this item is a resolution to advertise and accept bids for renovations to Corrin High School, specifically to the old weight room and, which would become their new media center, and then their old media center, which would become classroom space. So the superintendent recommends the board of education approve the resolution expressing the intent to advertise and take bids for a construction contract for Corrin High School renovations project and authorizing the superintendent and treasurer pursuant to applicable laws to proceed with commencement of such process as needed to solicit construction bids.
So moved. Second. Any discussion, questions? And they're turning the weight room into?
Media center. It's a media center, kind of like a student commons.
That passes five to zero. This is to permanent appropriations?
Yes, so annually by October 1st, the higher vice code requires that each board approve the permanent appropriations for the year for what most people would think of as your annual budget. So for our general fund with our community partnership, we cap our expenditures with a 3 percent growth from year to year, and all of our other funds are restricted, and so their budgets are cap-wide, their revenue that they bring in. So we'd like to ask the board to approve our fiscal 23 permanent appropriations at 145 million.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion or questions for Amy? Okay, that passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to superintendent update.
So just a reminder that we're doing something new. We're starting an annual state of the district address. It will be Tuesday, October 11th at 6:00 PM at Corrin High School's auditorium. We'll rotate it year to year. This is an opportunity for me and my team to really update the entire community about where we are as a district, where we're going, and the strategies we're using. So we'll be sure that we are updating everyone about our report card, our other data sources, and what we're doing. So we're excited to be able to put all that together in a concise presentation to really tell our story.
What time is that?
Six o'clock.
On the 11th of October?
Yep. And then we're excited that Northwest High School had a successful homecoming event last week, and we have Corrin High School's homecoming parade this Friday. And then just an update that we continue to communicate with our community around our master facility plan. We did send out a pretty lengthy F A Q today to try to respond to a lot of the questions that we've been getting. And then we also are launching a new website that hopefully brings the information together in a way that helps make it accessible. So that new website is buildingnwlsd.org, and it has a lot of information on there. Hopefully, it's organized in a way that's easy and accessible for people to get to so they can see the information that's important to them. So those are out there, and we continue to communicate about our building needs and are hoping that as people look at that and dive into it, that they continue to ask questions so that everyone can be very informed about what's going on. And that's it for tonight.
The Chip and his team will be there at Colrain on the.
Yes.
I've had some conversation here recently about us, or I'm like recommending that we go back to Facebook Live. Is there any thought around that? A lot of people, I don't think they know to navigate to watch it when it's happening at the Waycross. But I thought there was decent when we had COVID and we had the Facebook Live. I thought it was a fairly decent participation on Facebook. Any thoughts around that? Just try to get this out.
I'll look into it. I know there were some reasons why we didn't do both, but I'll look into it and see, get just some feedback about that.
So since Mrs. Hall is here, how was the homecoming and then the subsequent bonfire?
It was, it was very nice, very exciting to see the first time I've ever participated in a bonfire. Being the people, it warmed my heart. The kids out there excited. The bonfire was really nice. I was nervous, I didn't want any fires on the first year.
You got to go earlier.
Yeah.
That was your idea? That's what bonfires started.
I know, and I know, but it was a hard idea. But anyway, it went really well, and the kids enjoyed it, the community enjoyed it. It was just really a great implication of everybody in the community. And so it was really, really nice. I was very, very excited and very impressed for the kids. And then, you know, the homecoming dance, the kids did a great job. They behaved well at the homecoming dance, and it was just, it was just, we won, it was just.
Full circle.
We had a great day. We had a great weekend.
Sounds like a really great game to watch.
Yeah, it was, it was. It was a good period of time. So very exciting, and we're talking about more things to come for the month, so trying to get them in a mindset of what they need to do, so we can celebrate from here.
And how are you settling in to Northwest High School now?
I'm settling in great. It's been just busy, you know, just a very busy year, and just putting frameworks and systems in place, but it's been some standard on the smart. But it's been, you know, we are asking, it's just, you know, a lot of work, I think, a working year for us, putting some of the teenagers in place, and we're focusing on academics and how it all aligns. I'm really excited about that, with the team, just seeing the kids engage in the classroom, the teachers engage with the students, facilitating instead of just direct teaching. So it's kind of going along. You know, I count my days, I send out morning messages every morning to the teachers, and so I think I'm on day 28, day 28. So we do chills for the day on classroom management, we do announcements, we do reminders. The kids are getting settled in, you know. It's been, it's been, you know, 28 days full of frameworks and processes, like they're getting settled in, so.
Thank you. Appreciate the recap and update.
On the report card, I know you're going to address this in your, the state of the district, but early literacy component is obviously an area where we have a lot to make progress on. How does that tie to the letters program?
So as we begin, because report cards are a year in the rear. So this measures our students' last year. And so last year, we also had coming off of a year where not all the kids were in the building. The year before that was a shutdown. So there were a lot of factors last year, plus we were still masking, quarantining, close contacts, as well as isolating positives.
Don't say it.
It's all, I'm talking history. But, and so, and then there were sub shortages, and there were just a lot of factors. And so when you take into account all of the challenges that our staff had last year, and you look at where we landed on the report card, there are a lot of celebrations.
Sure. I didn't mean to take away from them.
As we continue to, oh, no, but as we continue to implement the early literacy strategies around letters, that will continue to grow. So this report card is our baseline, and I'm really excited about where we're going to go in the upcoming years, based on what you heard tonight with letters.
Sure. So in retrospect, and I don't say this judgmentally, would it have been better to put letters off to this year with all the stuff that, the challenges that we had last year?
There will always be challenges that will be barriers, and I think one of the things that was helpful last year for our staff was we front-loaded a lot of professional development days. So we were able to provide them a lot of the time in order to do the work, not just the learning, but all of the work that it took to dig into the modules, do the assessments, and do the readings. And so even though last year was hard, I think it was the, there's never a perfect time to do it, but last year was a good starting point that I think it gave people an opportunity to start to see success. Like you heard from our teachers, that they were implementing things last year, even in the middle of some of the chaos that we were dealing with, and seeing success that they're going to build on this year. So it amplifies us because we didn't wait, even though there were challenges, but because of the release time we gave them, there was ample time to really dig in.
Mr. Gator, we also had some timelines with legislation around dyslexia. I feel that we had to move forward with some of this professional wording. So there were also things that we didn't have a choice about the timing of, and I'm really glad that we jumped in. It was hard, but I'm really glad we jumped in, and I think it is going to make a difference as our teachers understand the why behind things and transmit that to our students.
And we.
It's a really important initiative.
And we did respond to the stress of last year because we initially had hoped to get through four units last year, and we scaled it back to three to give people time and space to really dig in because of so many other factors that were happening. So we adjusted along the way, but it was the right time to dive into it.
It sounds, it sounds great.
Yeah.
I mean, how, and I asked earlier, some of the people that are somewhat fresher out of their academic careers are probably more susceptible or relatable to learning a new process like this. Some of the veteran folks that have been here, like, is it, like, is it a big change in how you do things? Like, how does that equate to somebody that's been teaching for 29 years in our district?
I don't know. Lori, if you want to jump in, you're always more than welcome to join the conversation because she's the one who's really kind of leading the charge in the classrooms a lot. But I think when you think about, you know, our teachers want to do what's right for kids, and there were teachers who went through college when there were different paradigms that were kind of elevated over others. And this really is about bringing all of those paradigms together into a balanced approach that gives you the science of teaching reading, but still allows you the artfulness to be able to embed that in literature-rich environment. So in my mind, it's the best of both worlds.
I think with any new teaching strategy, the longer you've taught, the more kind of you're used to doing your thing.
Sure, exactly.
I mean, I think that goes with any profession at any change. I think it has been our younger teachers who have kind of been our trailblazers, if you will, because they're like, well, I'm just getting started, this sounds great, I'll do it. But it's our veteran teachers who are watching them carefully and going, wait a minute, I need to learn more. I've heard questions being asked.
Sure.
Lots of people reaching out to me for additional resources. You know, how do I find out to get trained on Wharton Gillingham or all of those types of things? So I think at first it was our new teachers that kind of got this train started, but our veteran teachers are jumping right in. They're seeing the progress that some of these classrooms are making. They're hearing kids talk about learning how to read and close syllable and open syllables and continuous sound and stop sounds, and so they're asking, like, wait a minute, you know? And they're making those connections that this happened in my letters training. They talked about this, this is what it looks like in my classroom. So I think we're getting more and more and more. And I'm also, just want to kind of add, I'm super excited. We did focus on K3 this year for our letters training so that we could move more towards some math training for our fourth and fifth grade teachers. And I had, I think it's about five teachers in fourth and fifth grade, but although they are doing some math training or they are allowed to do PPL, they have asked to continue to do the letters training, even if it was strictly on their own time. They find it valuable. They teach both math and language arts, and they want to continue that learning. So I think that speaks volumes to the program.
Absolutely, yeah.
So it was a rough start, absolutely, but I think we're, you know, they finished strong last year, and they've just continued to pick up this year and really kind of soak it in and then turn around very quickly and start using it in their classrooms.
I think it's fascinating, the scientific piece of it, like, that's, could be half the battle, maybe more.
I think the fact that it's not a program, that it is a collection of research-based strategies, like, I've had a chance to sit in the training, and like, it's intense. It's like learning about the brain and how the brain works and all the parts of the brain. And so many times, I think, we don't necessarily know the rules behind why English words are spelled like they are. For example, we just memorize them or learn them. They really help us and help our students to see, there's a reason behind things. And so when we teach, we shouldn't just say, that's just how it is, but, you know, we actually want our students to understand those things. And so it's incredibly informative, our administrators have been all in and participating in the trainings, principals, anesthetism principals, and I think it's really the right work for us.
It really is like taking a college course on your P D day. I mean, it's, there's, there's no way to sugarcoat it. It's a lot of work. But now that they see the value and it's starting to make sense, and they're beginning to see how they can apply it to their classroom, it makes all the difference in the world. They know that it's hard work, and they, now that they know what they can expect, like I said, I think they're all in. And we actually, I came to our administrators and I said, I know you sit in these sessions, they don't necessarily do the module work, you know, but they're, but they're also managing the group and making sure people are participating and have their cameras on. I said, do you, you know, do you want more? Because they're, I want more, I want more about what to look for in classrooms. So I gave them an option to take a two-day, all-day training on letters for administrators, and they quickly snatched up that opportunity, so they will actually be participating. That is on top of all of this. It's a two-day training specific for administrators, so they'll be doing that in November. So I'm excited for them to have that.
It seems like the kids are really inquisitive about not just, this is what you do. I went, when I read on, over at Mofford Heights, I brought a, I did green eggs in Am, and I brought a green egg that one of our chickens laid. And so they thought I dyed it. And I said, no, it's, it's a green egg. Kids on, yeah, that's this, I mean, like, like, made sure I was telling them the truth. I mean, they're very inquisitive, which, you know, understanding the truth behind things, I think is really important to this new generation of students.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you, Lori.
Thanks, Lori. Anything else for Daryl or his team? All right, that brings us to board member comments. Christopher?
Mark, just to remind Daryl, you had brought up about the homecoming Friday night. I think it's against Middletown. Should be a good game for Colrain, a good opportunity to see the Cards win one, and hope everybody can show up and make it.
Yes, you do.
October 5th is going to be our levy kickoff at Colrain High School from 6 to 8. We're going to have bands there and kids perform and handing out levy signs. So just make sure everybody is, remember, is that October 5th date from 6 to 8?
Six.
Yep.
Just to clarify, that is Community Partners.
Yeah, that's Community Partners for Education that's putting that on. That's not a, it's not a district, a district event.
I wanted to thank Green Township and Corrin Township Police and our building leaders for their quick action when the Princeton event was going down, just to make sure that all of our buildings were secure. And I know Green Township and Corrin were instrumental in that as well, so thank them. And then also remind people to join the boosters, and I know Northwest alumni, they were at the football game on Friday, and they're doing another event on October 14th, so anyone can join those, and all that money goes right back into the students and the school. And thank you to Casey and his team, Lexi Schmidt and Mr. Gaines. I think academic teaming is going to be with these kids for a long time, proving that they can, you know, speak and challenge their peers, but in a respectful way, and learn to disagree in a, in a nice way, so, thank you for this. Yeah, yes, yeah, very important, so, thank you for those presentations.
Text you, you're on. Mr. Teaser?
Yeah, just like to add, congratulations to all the students that Nicole named earlier, you know, quite numerous, to try and recap all that. And thank you to Casey, Andrea, Kara from Taylor to talk about letters program, and Leslie and Lexi from Colrain Middle School talking about P E B U S. I appreciate hearing from them. And Anthony Gaines from Northwest about academic teaming, and appreciate them coming and speaking this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. I had the pleasure of driving the Taylor float Thursday night, which was my first time ever pulling a float. But it was really, we were coming out of Civic Center and we hung the left, started to head up toward the high school, and there were, I've never seen so many people. I mean, it was packed. It was really, really neat to see. And Casey shares as a celebrity, like, I've never seen so many. Like, I've never seen so many, like, people that he's taught over the years just screaming his name, and so it was really neat to see that. You know, you get to see a different level of impact of what goes on in the district, which I think is.
What kind of candy did you provide?
I was driving. I didn't have time to throw candy. I was, I was nervous. I had, I had kids and teachers and PTA people and, I just wanted to thank Nadia for coming, and I got some time to speak with her Friday night. It was a great crowd, well-behaved. And the only thing I want to say is to everybody out on social media, like today I shared with Daryl a concern that was brought to me, and I don't assume that things are correct when they're posted on social media. Actually, probably 90% of the time, it's not accurate. But I'm challenging our community, and I did this last year, when you hear or read misinformation on social media, like, I'm tired of our district taking black eyes for things that didn't occur. And so I'm challenging our district supporters to call that out on social media. It's, you sat here tonight and heard amazing, positive, successful things, and that needs to be presented more and more and more. So I would appreciate if it was a community effort, because I am very proud of the things that go on with our children in this district. Very, very proud of it. And that's all I have.
If I could just piggyback on that comment. Along with that too as well, when you have questions, that social media isn't always the best place to go to ask that. We have administrative office here to answer your questions. Every building has principals, assistant principals that you can email, you can reach out, phone call to ask your questions, and I'm pretty confident that most of them will respond and answer. And that's where you get the actual information and not the misinformation that Mark here is mentioning.
Thanks, sir. With that, we'll adjourn the meeting. I need a motion in a second, please.
Sub move.
Just want to thank everybody for participating and watching, if you're watching it on Waycross TV right now. And that concludes our meeting. Thank you.